Roll call of members, Mike Ahern, Chairman is absent. John Ranlett, Vice Chairman, will act as Chairman tonight. Rhonda Bishop, Mr. Paul Wilson, Pat Roach, John Kelly, Ray Gosney, Selectman's Rep. Bob Dragin, Alternate, will vote tonight. Dick Lewis, Selectman's Alternate. And...
John?
Yeah, I got John. And we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay. We have a corner. Do we have any public comments?
From the public?
None. Item number three. Administrative matters. It's going to be a continuation of the site plan application for the elderly housing at 230 Fairground Road from the June 16, 2011 public hearing. And this continuation was noticed at the close of the 616 public hearing by the Planning Board Chairman, Mike Ahern. We will bring this hearing back into action as of 6:35. I was not here at the last meeting, so would somebody like to continue? It was my understanding that it was requested for some engineering work. Sharon, can you?
Yes, I can. Actually, I have updated minutes from the 16th. I sent you all the electronic copy. They were not very comprehensive, so I went over them. So I'm going to pass these out now because it does mention where we were at at that point. So just so we have a record. Oops.
Thank you.
Okay. And on June 16th, this was the first plan up at bat. Application on the following site plan review, PID number 208-039, construction of 16 units of one-bedroom, single-story elderly housing at 3...excuse me, 230 Fairgrounds Road in Plymouth. And if you go to page...page four, I believe, Mr. Lewis suggested he was sitting in for Mr. Gosney at that particular point, that the engineer give his review in a timely manner that would allow the board to discuss this proposal at the next workshop meeting scheduled for July 7, 2011. You made a motion and voted, and it passed unanimously. The fact was that this board felt that there should be a little more engineering oversight or analysis on behalf of the board by the town's engineer, and that's what transpired. The applicant did get in contact with Mr. Vignali, and he looked at their plans and their drainage projections, et cetera, and I think you all have a copy of his report in front of you, and that's essentially where we're at unless the board cares to do any more deliberation or discussion of any other aspects of this.
Was there...there was no motion made to approve with stipulations?
No, if I understand correctly, Mr. Lewis can speak to this. I mean, that's where we were at. There needed to be additional information put into the process via Mr. Vignali, so we essentially...or you folks continued this meeting until tonight so that in the interim, the town's engineer could give his analysis.
Okay. And we have his information here. Has this been shared?
Yes. Oh, those folks, yeah. They spoke with Mr. Vignali.
Okay.
The applicant did.
Mr. Chairman, might I suggest that we have the town planner step through the correspondence that is dated July 6 from Mr. Vignali, just to highlight points that she feels need to be pointed to.
Okay. Sharon, would you like to?
Sure. I'd be happy. This is, as Mr. Gosney said, this is the report back from July 6 from Mike Vignali, who is the town's consulting engineer regarding this project. It says, "We have reviewed the plan set dated June 14, 2011, and the drainage calculations dated June 21, 2011," which came in after our 16th meeting, prepared by Horizon's Engineering in accordance with our agreement. Based on our review, we offer the following comments. There are some general comments, which are clarifications. They're pretty straightforward. They are what I would...
Excuse me?
Certainly. They're what I would label boilerplate, but they need to be involved in the picture, so it's just a matter of detail. A sidewalk ramp detail must include detectable panels per the Americans with Disability Act requirements. That is number one. Number two, update the concrete sidewalk detail to reflect the porous pavement proposed next to the curb. Add the porous pavement maintenance manual requirements, which are standardized, to the plans. Clarify what type of surfacing is proposed and provide construction details for the six parking spaces at the south end of the proposed lot. I believe that was the overflow parking, what we determined to be the overflow parking. That was just kind of left a little loose at the outset, so no big deal. And this is just administrative. The certified wetland scientist must stamp the final plan set, so we need a stamp and signature from Mr. Lobdell.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry.
Would this be an appropriate time? I just wanted a clarification on one of those. On the first one, it said we must include detect...the detail must include detectable panels. What is a detectable panel?
Isn't that the textured...you know, so if you were blind or whatever, you know, the ramp up to ADA sidewalk, those metal plates usually...
Nowadays, it has metal plates, or it has cement, has these little round...
Right.
Ah, okay. All right. All right.
Yeah, I guess that's...
All right. Thank you.
Sure. All right. So those are the general, one through five. Fairly easy to comply with, it appears. Number six, which is essentially the final particular approval conditioning, is drainage. It says, "The entire proposed driveway and parking lot are proposed to be porous pavement, pervious pavement, which is appropriate for the site and will not result in increased runoff." Anyway, I'll cut to the chase here. The runoff is proposed...the roof runoff, excuse me, the roof runoff is proposed to be directed to drip strips, which will be constructed with four inches of stone. The calculations provided for the drip stone include stormwater storage, volume calculations, but no hydraulic calculations. Hydraulic calculations for the required design storm capacity must be provided for this roof run-up and drip strip. To ensure increased impervious area associated with the new roof is fully mitigated. So it looks like the applicant needs to do some additional hydraulic calculations to proof that four-inch design parameter for the stone. That looks like pretty much the only actual drainage issue. And finally, the boilerplate, additional boilerplate. A stormwater pollution prevention plan, which is standard, has to be required to be obtained for the site prior to the start of any construction, and a driveway permit is also required for access. I believe both of these are in process. That's the extent of it.
John?
For a safety issue, I wonder if there are blinking lights, because when you come out of that hollow and come up on the top of that road, it's sort of a...I went over there the other day, and it's sort of a blind spot, especially with sun and stuff like that. I'm wondering if blinking lights...
When you're coming up?
Yeah.
Headed towards town?
Yeah.
Excuse me. I don't have a copy of the driveway permit. Is that something the engineer...the DOT addressed?
Yes, as far as I know, we do have the driveway permit.
Right. But did they...they didn't address...
Well, we had to show work on the plans to improve site distance. That whole slope is going to be cut back, so we could site distance.
Right. But...oh, I thought you were aware of that.
It's shown here.
Okay. It is shown on there, yeah. No, I thought you meant in addition to them cutting the bank. Oh, no. No, they're good. They've done the work.
Ray?
That was the...
Great. You tell people...
Here it is.
Excuse me. Conversation at a time. Ray?
Mr. Chairman, as I read, we listened to the first few comments here and reflect on the fact that Mr. Lewis was one of four individuals that is here tonight that was part of the deliberations and the hearing that took place when this application was accepted. My recommendation would be that I step aside and let Mr. Lewis take my seat for the rest of the deliberations on this project. I think he's in a better position to be, or I want to say productive. I certainly can read the minutes, but my belief is Mr. Lewis is here tonight. He wouldn't want to sit here to let him sit in on this, and let me sit in the audience.
That'll be fine.
Such a gentleman.
Does the applicant have any comments on the engineer report?
Yes, Mike, I'd like to address the... I'm Mike Duffy with Horizon's Engineering, the engineer of record. We do have the driveway permit. There's a copy right here that Sharon, you can throw into the file, so that's one item that we could check right off the list.
Oh, where is it? Oh, it's over here?
It's on its way down that way. As far as, you know, we did receive...it took a couple of weeks to get the comment letter, but we received that late last night, and today we made all the changes to the plans. We have not fully addressed the drainage item, which I'll get to, but so we've...under all the general items, we now show a detail for the handicap access ramp for the ADA. We've changed the detail. We have a detail for the porous pavement that was on the plans. We had a detail, a standard detail for the curbing. The standard detail with the curbing just showed a regular 12 inches of gravel, six inches of crush. So we modified that detail particularly to show the porous pavement. So it was kind of a...it's a little bit of an overlap. There's a detail, but we changed the one detail so they perfectly matched. We added the information to the plans for the porous pavement, the notes on it. We've also specified the gravel overflow parking lot. We've shown a detail on that, and we've had Ray Lobdell seal the plans. So all of those items are taken care of on that list, and I've brought three new plan sets tonight for the record file. As far as the drainage design goes on, I did talk to Mike today, and, you know, we're really...we're talking about the roof drainage here. In the front of the building, we've got what's called a French drain in. It's a four-foot-deep trench that they'll dig with the excavator. It's got a pipe that runs along the bottom of it. It's filled up the rest of the way with stone. And then we have basins. They're called Nioplast basins that are...I think they're 18-inch diameter. They have a bubble grate on top of them so that the water off the roof can get in the front where we have the sidewalk, and it can't just surface flow if that's the issue. You know, realistically, I understand where he's coming from to some degree, but I asked him where it was in the site plan review regulations that we had to do, you know, this sort of additional drainage design, and he said there are no regulations in the site plan review that he was requiring. And, you know, he had some good comments, but I really felt like this didn't...there was no point in doing it. We could...you know, we can come up with some calculations, but, you know, you have to make assumptions about how fast the water will be absorbed into the soil. We did give him data on the storage amount that would be within the stone envelope that's being created, and it's relatively significant. I mean, we're talking about roof drainage. So, you know, we can spend a half a day and come up with some numbers, and we can submit those, and we'd be happy to do them to a degree. We'd rather not have to do them, but if that's what it would take to get the approval here and to satisfy the town engineer, then we'd be more than happy to do that.
Okay.
So whether that could be a condition or, you know, my professional opinion is it's...there's no point to doing it, and it's just going to take a half a day away of time from somebody that could be doing something else in the audience. But, that aside, it's your decision to make. I was a little taken aback by his position that, you know, you get my approval or you don't get to do the job, which I was a little bit...I felt that was being a little bit over the top, because it's your decision, not his. It's just my opinion.
That's true, but again, not having the engineering background with a lot of us, we do rely on him quite a bit.
Sure. And I have no problem with the peer review, and like I say, there were a couple of good comments that he had. I talked to him, you know, engineer to engineer. I thought that this was...it was common sense, that this wasn't going to be necessary. There's no requirement in your site plan review that a certain amount of water has to be retained on site. So he said, "The 10-year design storm." Okay, well, that's good to know, which design storm. The system is set up...there's an overflow pipe. Whatever water doesn't get into the ground is going to overflow, and it's going to go into an established ditch, and it's going to flow down. Well, it's never going to make it to the water. This is a big pile of sand over there. So we have the data that shows very well what the site is made from. We're shown because of the porous pavement. We had to do test pinning to really identify what the site soils were. So I believe that this is asking something that is not necessary. But like I say, we're happy to go through the exercise to get an approval from the town engineer.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments, Sharon?
I would just...yeah, I would make a follow-up comment on that, and I'm Dave White, the architect.
Okay.
We've done numerous projects, two-story, three-story, one-story, that have gravel drip strip around the building. Some of these projects are on ledge. Some of them are on hot pan. This one is on gravel, and we haven't had a problem, to my understanding, with any of these big roofs that drain into the drip strip. The whole reason for putting a drip strip around the building is really twofold. Number one is to take the water and channel it down. Number two is by putting the drip strip around the building, you have a clean surface, so you don't have water bouncing off the dirt and spraying dirt back upon the siding. So from an aesthetic reason, that's one of the reasons why we do it, and number two for the drainage situation. And this is probably the best site that we've ever had in terms of drainage. Can't it might be a study? Yeah, can't be, but that's still under construction. So just from a...from an experience standpoint, there will be no problem. In fact, the addition of the French drains in the front make it just that much better. I mean, the backyard is basically flat. It basically slopes very gently off, so any water that might not go into the drip strip and therefore into the ground is just going to go across the ground and ever more into the gravel surfaces. So from my standpoint, it's just not a necessary exercise for these guys to prove that water's going to go into the ground.
All right. Thank you. Town Planner, Sharon?
Well, I appreciate the professional input. As you said, Mr. Chair, we do rely on our town engineer, who we've found to be quite moderate. He's got nothing to prove, so we do take him at his word when he suggests something. We do have, and I'm certainly not an engineer, but we do have a point of some elevation in the backyard, pretty close to the roof, one of the points of the roof, and that's what, you know, Mr. Vignali was concerned about runoff and some erosion. I mean, it's...if the calculations prove out that the four inches of drip strip are fine, then they are. I mean, he's not, as you know, he's not frivolous, and I don't think he's trying to prove any particular point. I just think that was his recommendation to us, and unless anyone else here has any expertise, I certainly don't, in hydrology, I would go with the recommendation. I think it's a reasonable request as a condition of approval. We have pretty much fast-tracked this for these folks. This is a special meeting, and I think that if our engineer is asking for a little due diligence, I think that we ought to have it as a condition of approval, plus his other recommendations. I commend the applicant for getting the first five or six out of the way.
Okay.
It's pretty straightforward, but that's...
They have discussed those with you, and you're aware that these have been taken care of?
Just...I've just heard this tonight, but as long as, you know, I trust them to tell the truth, so we just got these plans this minute, too, so I'm assuming...Mike said it was pretty much good to go. He just had an issue with the hydraulic calculations, and he would like a little bit of engineer...he said limited engineering oversight when the drainage goes in. That's all, upon construction, so...
Is there any way...I know in the past that I've been sitting on the board that one time there was a road over on...near Luton Lake, and they needed...by the time we got through with it, they wanted $100,000 worth of sub drainage, and it's just a dirt road. And also Lowe's, we spent...they spent $450,000 trying to find out what the hydraulics are and everything like that, so we drove them out. Is there any way that we could make a stipulation that if anything should happen, they would be responsible for it?
Well, that's...
Instead of making them go through everything and to the utmost and not ever have it happen?
I don't think that's what's being asked for, John, right now. I think the town's engineer is just asking for the calculations behind the specification of four inches of that drip strip. Is it adequate? They just want to see the math. He...Mike Vignali just wants to see the math, basically. It's not, you know...
An exercise. Plymouth has a great habit of over-stating a lot of the math problems and so forth. I just...sometimes, somewhere along the way, we've got to get some business in here, whether it's tax pay or not. So if you have something in the stipulation, if something happens that they are responsible for, then, you know...
Well...
Instead of going through an exercise of math that doesn't amount to anything, what is the sense of it?
Well, I would respectfully say that. I don't think it doesn't amount to anything. It's a question of the engineer put forth, and it's a little bit of calculation. He's referring to where the slope is steep there, where the close the proximity is of that corner of the roof to that, just so it doesn't erode. I think that's fairly fair.
Well, if they're going to go through the math, then what are you going to do? You know, like, they have all these things on this new energy audit. They're spending all kinds of money for energy audit with no money to fix it. Well, any time I ever had an audit or ever did an audit, there had to be money to fix what I found out was wrong. Okay? So to do the math without saying that they're going to have to do something about it, either he's saying that they're okay, and I just want the math, they're putting my records, or they're not okay, and they'd better do something about it before they...
Well, I mean, if I may, I mean, I think Mike Vignali's point is that the math is necessary to come to the conclusion of...
No.
Is it going to work or is it not going to work?
No, that's the point. Yeah. He doesn't...he just wants the calculations to have the calculations, because if it doesn't work, well, the water will flow over the ground. I mean, this is like a house. This is your house with the water coming up the roof. It's not like a Walmart or something with a very large flow of water coming up the roof that needs to go somewhere.
Well, I mean, I guess with all due respect, I would make this statement, that, you know, you could do 20 projects like this that are all small, and everyone says, "Oh, it's small, it doesn't make any difference." But if the drainage doesn't work on any of them, then somewhere downstream, there's some kind of a problem.
Well, what does that mean? It all has to work... Someone could build a house, and I'm just...
Yeah. Yeah, we just...we don't want to get...again, Pat, you have some comments?
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Duffy, if I could.
Okay.
Can you just explain the detail? Is this French drain what we're talking about? I just want to understand this better.
There's a French drain on the front of the building.
Right. That's what's detailed on this page here?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
And then in the back, it's just...it's a drip strip. It's just what you would put on your own house.
Right.
You'd put a swath of stone in the ground where the water hits, so it can go into the ground. The...this...if, let's say, the ground is frozen, Ray, add that drip strip.
Right.
Well, then, it's going to flow away from the house. It's going to sheet flow. This is not like a concentrated roof. It has a long roof area.
Right.
I don't know what width the building is, but it's a very narrow building. It's...see, this is...what I'm saying is it's common sense that there's no real point to doing the calculations, because even if the calculations show that there's a little runoff off the site, well, we can have a little runoff off the site. There's no regulation that says that we can't discharge sheet flow. So it's like, I just don't see the point to it, otherwise I'd be...I'd really be happy to do it if we could see some logic behind doing it, but it's just an exercise.
Yeah, I understand your position. I'm just going to clarify a question. So this French drain detail is only in the front of the building, not in the back of the building?
That's correct.
Okay. So in the back is there...how much stone is in that drip strip in the back? How deep is it?
It's probably going to be an architectural...
It's three feet wide, and it's four inches deep. But don't just think that the...as the gravel and the only...the...excuse me, the stone has the only container of water.
Right, because it's permeable underneath that, obviously. Yeah. Right, yeah. No, I understand. I'm just trying to understand the principle, so I'm just trying to get clarification. And where does this pipe run to on the French drain into this Nioplast prefer-to-drain basin that we're...
That would show on the site plan. See, it's...what we do is there's like an overflow on the drainage, so that if it doesn't all percolate in, there's a relief point, a pipe that comes out of the closed drainage and discharges to a ditch.
Okay. Thank you.
Bob?
I'm really confused. I'm going back to what Sharon just was going to say. Process versus what's the calculations. Maybe you're talking two different things here. Let's assume the calculations are done, and they still have a problem. What do we do then? Is there any way to monitor a situation like this without having someone go through endless studies and statistics and data to satisfy something that probably may be important? I'm not an engineer, I don't know, but certainly from what these gentlemen have expressed here, it seems to me if there's a problem down the road and the calculations have something to do with it, then the process comes into play and has to be repaired, has to be fixed, whether you have it or not. I don't see...
I think this is what Mr...
Providing something if you don't need it, if it's separate from the process and the calculation.
Right.
It's two different things, in my opinion.
And I think that's what John was alluding to, that, you know...
Yeah, I agree.
That you could put the stipulation in there...
That's right.
That you don't have to do the...it's to the board's discretion to decide if they want the calculation done before, or if they want them to assume the liability and put that in there, that if, you know, if it's not adequate, it needs to be addressed and taken care of. And again, I think that's for the board to decide when they...when they make the motion, if there is anything required in there. And again, you know, we rely on Mike for a lot of this, and I think what we need to...what we need to do is, we as a board need to make a decision, and Mike has made a recommendation, and whatever the board's pleasure is, is what... the board's pleasure is, is what is gonna be approved and what is gonna be attached to this. So, Paul, did you have something?
Yeah, the, the town engineer has recommended that calculations be provided to, to ensure that there is, that there, we're fully mitigated, that the applicant is fully mitigated for the increased impervious area, the roof, associated with the new roof. He didn't ask for it for, for no reason. He, he had a reason for it, because he was concerned. He didn't ask for endless calculations. In fact, the applicant has stated that it would be about a half a day of work to prove to the town engineer that the drainage is sufficient. I, for one, would much rather see a half-day's work go into ensuring that there's enough, there's appropriate drainage there, rather than to rely on some remediation, probably very expensive and difficult remediation sometime down the road.
Okay. Sharon, and then I'll get your-
My understanding from speaking, Mike called me this afternoon, is he feels the four inches may be inadequate. He wants to know why that standard was recommended. If it's a standard, fine, but he wants some just, a little bit of justification on that. Part two of my comment is, and I do agree with Paul very much, that, you know, I think if there's a potential for error or whatever inadequacy, shall we say, not error, you might want to check it out first, rather than to have to go back and bird dog it. However, we do have, there are two ways to approach that. We are going to have a development agreement with the applicant, which is standard, for all these contingencies and this and that. And also, as, as I said before, Mike Vignelli is recommending a limited amount of his engineering oversight to satisfy his concerns on behalf of the town, that this is put in properly. It's nothing against the applicant, there's no implied onus, it's just he is doing his due diligence, because we can't on our own behalf, because none of us, including me, are engineers. So I just wanted to make that perfectly clear. This is not back to the drawing board. This is just tell us why it's four inches, if that's a standard and not more, or whatever.
Yeah, okay. Bob?
Well, I, I still have an objection here with this discussion, and I disagree with Paul, because I think unless he's telling us of the board that these calculations will be firm and accurate one hundred percent, and nothing will happen down the road, they would not be responsible for any remedial action if we require them to do these calculations, if you're so sure that these calculations are that important. There's a remedial possibility, whether you have them or you don't have them, in my opinion, and why make someone go through something when it's not necessary? Because we mentioned the process, and we mentioned we just want calculations to substantiate more data, more data. We seem to do a lot of that, and I think it's overkill. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Anybody else have any comment? Do we have a motion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, are you going to, Mr. Republican, please, comment on the public?
I'm sorry, yes. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to make a comment?
Yes, I'd like to comment, Frank Miller. And since this town has accepted the International Building Code system, part of the obligation of the International Building Code for all property owners and building owners is the continual upkeep and maintenance of their facility in a safe, effective manner. So, I think that is a specific, what they, there are rules in there that says, person has an obligation to maintain that piece of property in a safe, effective manner. It's self-obligation as far as making sure that whatever drainage system you have is working function, and if it's failed, who cares either. But I still think, I still support and recommend passage, regardless of the process of the planning board's decision matrix here. But I just thought I'd bring it up, the International Building Code has a section in there that talks about maintenance, repair of existing structures, the obligation.
Okay. Ray?
Thank you, Ray Gosney. First, an observation. As an engineer, it is sometimes difficult to get two engineers together. There certainly is the variation that can occur in a professional assessment about what is appropriate or what may not be appropriate in a particular situation. Secondly, because it's very difficult sometimes to have a metric to make a decision, as you were trying to do tonight, perhaps it would be helpful to understand from the standpoint of the cost element, from the applicant's perspective. I know we've heard the estimate that was spoken to by Paul up here, that the applicant's indicated it's about, it may be as much as four hours or as little as four hours of work. But I think it might be helpful to understand what the cost burden is that you would be asking the applicant to bear to comply with the request from the town's engineer. I think that just helps you get your mind around it a little bit better if you had a dollar figure to work from.
Okay. The applicant have, engineer, do you have any cost implications?
Well, we're working for a lump sum fee, so it's not gonna cost the client anymore, and, you know, it's probably eighty dollars an hour. You know, it's, it's not so much, it's, it's more of the principle from my perspective, to a degree, and I hope you can understand that. I'm more than willing, you know, as an engineer, and totally, engineers disagree all the time. We give our opinions, and everybody has their own opinion. This, to me, was something, in my opinion, that, that shouldn't have been brought up, because it, it doesn't merit what is being asked. Regardless if it's a day, or if it's a week at times. If it was a week at times, I'd probably be a little bit more wondering why we're doing it. But if it was a week at times, it'd probably be something that did deserve merit, in my opinion. We probably, as two engineers, we could probably agree that it was more important. So it's more a matter of principle, and, you know, this is the first time I'm in here to the board, and, you know, I just want to make sure that we're, we're willing to do a good job, and we're willing to do whatever the board wants, but I think that there's an onus back on your side to say, well, we don't know anything about what the engineer's talking about. Because a situation like this, you do. This is like your house, where the water's coming off the roof. There's, there's no requirement for us to detain water on site. There's no requirement for us to meet any sort of drainage standards with respect to any design storm. So we have nothing in your regulations themselves that tells us what we have to design to. Now, we've done, I think, a really good job on this site with the drainage design, with the porous pavement. A pretty significant cost is going in for this porous pavement, and the maintenance of it is relatively expensive as well. So I think that we have a really good set of plans in front of you, and good stewards of the site. And so it just was a little bit, kind of rubbing me the wrong way, his perspective, that it was his way or the highway. And so that kind of made me feel a little bit like, well, gee, you know, I, I want to pick my battles, and I don't really want to pick this one. And, and, you know, if, if the discussion would end to say, Mike, do the four hours of calculation and send something in so that it can go into a file somewhere, that's mine, you know, and we will do it. But, you know, I don't know if this is the first time a discussion has come out from an engineer that is, is taking a disagreement with the consulting engineer, the town's consulting engineer or not. But it's, I mean, this is a very small item, really. So we've probably already talked about it too much.
Any further comment from the public?
As, as the owner, I just want the board to know that we're required to put monies into a reserve for replacement, so that if we have any type of capital issues, that there's money available, or each year, every month, we're required to do that. So there will be funds there to deal with any issues that are inspired in the future.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments? I will close the public hearing at seven eleven.
I have two more questions. Mr. Duffy isn't mine. First off, the land off the back, I assume it's gonna be grass before the tree line. You guys are gonna plant seed and grass and everything. And I haven't been to this site, but how heavily treed is this as it goes down the bank? Is this like pretty, pretty good undergrowth going on there? So there's, there's not a lot of chance for erosion anyway, 'cause it's probably all treed and stuff growing. I have a steep bank behind my house, and it doesn't erode, because there's so many trees holding it back. I was feeling that if you clear cut the trees down, you have more of an erosion problem, you know. But the other question I have, though, is just, why is there a need for the French drain in the front but not the back? I mean, what's your engineering position on that?
Well, in the front, you have the sidewalks, and so you have isolated areas.
Less place for water to soak in, right?
Right, well, we want the water to drain away from the building, but we also want the sidewalks to be dry as well. So it creates a low point in the ground, so you want to capture that and, and give it a relief.
Right, and in the back, you're all grass, you don't worry if the water was in there. Okay, thank you.
See, you know, I mean, even this detail, this drip edge detail, it's, it's not an engineered detail, it's, it's an architectural detail.
Right.
It's not, there hasn't been any engineering design done on the drip edge. It's, it's not an engineered structure. But we can still, I mean, we can figure out void volume and things like that, and infiltration rates, and, I mean, we can do something, so.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Any other discussion? Do we have a motion? Bob?
Before we have a motion, may I ask a question of the chair?
Go ahead.
Who's voting tonight?
Bob.
Okay.
John, Paul, Dick-
Everybody.
Ron.
Everybody.
Dick, and Pat, myself.
Mr. Gosney, is he voting?
He's, he stepped down for, since Dick had been, had been involved in this last week, he-
Just wanted to be sure we, we knew-
Right.
Eligible.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Paul?
I'd like to make a motion, please.
Go ahead.
I move that we approve this application, subject to all of the recommendations made by the town engineer.
Do we have a second?
I'd second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay.
I abstain.
John Kelly abstains. So it passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope that wasn't too much of a thing.
No?
No.
Thank you for your time.
Understand, after all of that incident, it's been four years, and nothing came of it.
Now you're throwing them out?
Ray, Ray just stepped down for that.
Yeah, for, for that particular-
I'm sorry.
You confused me. Dick, did, did you tell me you weren't gonna be here tonight, or I'm finally losing it?
Twenty-first, he said.
Twenty-first.
Oh, twenty-first.
Okay.
That's right.
How about the, the minutes, or item B, their approval of the minutes from six-two and six-sixteen?
Well, it's up to you, Mr. Chair. I do have, as I said earlier, I took the minutes from the June second workshop and the June sixteenth public hearing, and did some serious editing, because I didn't feel they were worth, uh-
Well, maybe, maybe at, maybe at this time, we'll go ahead, if you can send them to us-
I already did.
And we will defer, or, or hand them out tonight, and, and we'll defer till the next meeting.
Yep, I've sent them electronically, and you get hard copies.
That way we'll, uh-
I've got a set, so I don't-
Oh, from tonight, that says that on it?
Yeah.
Oh, from my recent email?
Well, you sent one out late today, didn't you?
Yeah, that was this version.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Just, you know, you get too many sets of stuff, and it's crazy.
Do we have any correspondence?
No.
Nope.
Pretty sure, yeah.
Okay. The committee report, Board of Selectmen, Ray Gosney?
I'll offer the, the floor again to Dick, if there's anything he feels he may want to expand on. I don't have anything that comes to my mind, from the recent select board activities to-
I mean, I guess the only thing that really comes to mind immediately is, you know, the RFP is out for the public safety buildings, and the submission date is the fifteenth, I think it is.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
July.
From tomorrow, yeah. So the board, Board of Selectmen will start looking at those, the meeting on the eighteenth, and coming to some, coming to grips with that issue a little bit better. That's the only thing that really comes to mind immediately.
Okay. Conservation Commission, Paul?
Yeah, just two things. In the, the two major conservation areas we have in town, the Walter Newton Natural Area and the Plymouth Mountain Trail, we continue to have vandalism and, and litter and trash left on the site. It is cleaned up regularly on a volunteer basis by members of the Conservation Commission, but we're trying to see what we can do to bring it to the greater attention of the police, to try to catch some of these miscreants. So we hope that it would be, if not stopped, at least reduced. On the good side, I hadn't previously reported this, but on May fourteenth, at the Walter Newton Natural Area, we had a major trail repair day, and it was done collaboratively between the Conservation Commission and the Geo Club at Plymouth State. There were approximately twelve to thirteen students and a couple of faculty advisors who came out and provided a lot of really valuable labor at building bridges and building walks to go over wet areas, muddy areas on the, on the trail, to make it far more accessible for, for people to walk the trail. So there was really a very good piece of work that was done on that day in mid-May, and was largely the result of the, all the volunteer effort by the, by this club at the university. So we wanted to say thank you to them.
Okay. The zoning board of adjustments, Sharon?
Uh, they didn't meet this month, so I have nothing to report.
Rhonda Bishop is not here. Pemidjwaset River Local Advisory Committee?
That is what we refer to as PRLAC with the acronym, and John Kelly has offered himself up as a sacrificial lamb. Now, he's going to very graciously be a representative to the committee. Once again, as I mentioned at the Board of Selectmen's meeting, anyone else out there who's interested, love to have some input.
Okay. Town Planner Report?
We are going to be meeting, our regular meeting, the twenty-first, to essentially have a site plan update slash compliance hearing. That term's kind of a little bit loosely applied to this, but for lack of anything better, for Plymouth Woods. Butters notices are going out, and there'll be a notice in the paper, and this is just a, a good opportunity for conversation for everyone, the neighbors, the neighborhood, and the principals, to let us know where they're at in terms of their construction, which they hope to begin before fall sets in.
This is where?
Here, it's our regular planning board meeting on the twenty-first.
No, no, no.
Oh, Plymouth Woods, it's on Fairgrounds Road. It's, oh, gosh.
It's not where we-
It is closer to town. Is that right?
Is it the old Fairgrounds one?
No. No, is that the reverse?
No, it's the-
I'm sorry, what?
Some of the old Fairgrounds.
No, that parcel's been sold to the co-op.
Oh, okay.
So, no, that's not there. That's near Mountain View Farms.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, kind of in there. It's part of their old parcel.
Okay.
Uh, I, gosh, let me think. Nothing, really. I mean, all, all our construction's perking along, which is great. This is moving forward, Plymouth Woods is moving forward.
Trying to supply them forward.
Yeah, very much so. And we took down the do-not-enter signs at the Walmart crossover thing.
Yeah.
I did, Ray, I did speak to, or left a message with the management at Walmart about that tree.
Thank you.
That's, that's in the way. And again, it's a pine, you think, or?
No, it's a deciduous tree.
Deciduous, okay. On the left, on the right as you're going, maybe a birch?
Yeah, it's immediately in front of the stop sign there. I'm not sure of the species.
In front of the stop sign when you're at the stop sign?
Yeah, it's probably-
Yes, I misunderstood you.
Twenty feet from the stop sign in front of it.
Okay, all right.
I, I know, I've seen it there.
Yeah, it really obscures it.
Yeah, they're box it, yes.
Not good.
And I still am of the belief that the town and Walmart would be well-served if there was a warning sign-
Yeah.
About thirty or forty yards down the hill a little bit.
Yep.
Just says, "Stop ahead."
Yeah, I've got that into, to Mike, so we'll follow up on that.
We had, we had a, a plan for the landscaping of Walmart, telling them exactly where to plant all the trees and everything. Now, is this in, in opposition of where we told them to plant that tree?
Well, I don't know. I'd have to look at the plan, but I have a feeling that something's just overgrown at this point.
Yeah, well, if we told them to plant that tree there, and, and it hasn't died, then that-
How unusual.
That, that, they're gonna be wrong no matter what, because the town's gonna say, "Plant the tree there." They planted a tree there, and now they say, "Take it away, because we don't want it." So they can't win.
Well, I, I think because they have a great garden center there, they can get a pair of loppers, John, and just kind of, I think it's a maintenance issue. And this is the first year the stop signs have been in, so it probably didn't make any difference before. But now it's a different scenario.
That's why I was having a long time ago.
Okay. Any new business?
Mr. Chairman, just as an FYI, perhaps it may even fall under other business, I'll be attending, on behalf of the town, the appeals that are being heard by the New Hampshire Public Utilities Commission on the Groton Wind Farm Project. My only intent is to be, provide a presence, if you will, on behalf of the town. My only intent is to be, provide a presence, if you will, on behalf of the town. You may recall last month's meeting, that we pointed out that the select board made the determination to not file an appeal, but the fact that we'll have a representative there is hopeful, it'll convey a message that we still remain very interested in the outcome of that project.
Okay.
When is that, right?
Pardon?
When is that?
Tomorrow morning, 9 o'clock.
I'm gonna say it soon.
Okay. Any unfinished business? Any public comments?
The public has no comments.
Thank you for attending, public.
Don't forget to sign in, Frank, 'cause you're it, so it's okay.
Do I have a motion for adjournment?
No move.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Dismissed.
Time, 7:20.